Okay, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. We have Danielle Jewen, Susan Garette, Mark Donovan, Martha Majeski, and myself, Bob Cooney. We had an executive session on May 18th and June 14th to discuss land acquisition, potential litigation, and personnel matters, and consent and acceptance of minutes of the Board of Supervisors meetings, actually just one, April 27, 2023 workshop, and the other is not. Do I need to make a motion on that, or just?
You can do the rest of the report.
Okay. All departmental committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of May 23. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay. The May 10 minutes were tabled, so the motion is just for the April 27 workshop.
Yeah, we pulled that one out. All right. Treasurers' Report and Payment of Bills, Lori.
So, we have the Treasurer's Report for period ending April 30, 2023. Tonight, you'll recall, we didn't have this one available at the last meeting. So, end of month, April 2023, we had a general fund balance of about 4.9 million. That was up about 900,000 over the previous month. That was primarily due to real estate tax income. At that point, we were at 47% of revenue and 25% of expenditures. I'll go ahead with the May report as well, then you can do both motions. Treasurer's Report for period ending May 31, 2023, general fund balance of 5.4 million. We're up about 500,000 over last month. 62% of revenue has been realized at this point in the year, and 30% of expenses. So, we're right on, right on track.
Make motion, accept that? Do I hear a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Approval of dispersments dated June 14, 2023. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Do we need to go over that? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, you're picking me up through Martha's probably. Sorry about that. Land Development Approval, 140 Dawson Drive, consideration of adoption of Resolution 2023-13, approving conditional final land development plan for Thomas Cosgrove and Deckman Motor and Pump Incorporated, 140 Dawson Drive. Go ahead, Bill. One on the right.
Yeah, okay. This is a small industrial property proposal. It's in that island of our township property on the west side of the township. You may recall that there was a zoning application for a number of variances. Our principal concern was the parking in the front and trying to move the property back so that there'd be more room for turnaround in the front. It's in an industrial park, so it's otherwise compliant with the zoning regulations. The zoning relief was granted. There's been a delay. There are a number of waivers that were requested, and Paul has gone over those, both from subdivision and stormwater management perspective. So, they're preliminary and final. It's a relatively small proposal. They repair engines and other equipment on site, but in the zoning case, we went through all of the issues about noise and odors and all other business, and all of that was satisfactorily resolved. So, I'll ask Paul to comment on the waivers. Now, this does not mean that you signed the plan. We still have to finalize the escrow agreement. We need to get the escrow figures together, and there's a land development and financial security agreement that we've approved the format for, but we have to fill in the blanks there. So, if this is approved, next steps will be ministerial, and then there'll be approval, and then there'll be building permits.
Yeah, just to further the conversation with Bill. So, the project did receive the Planning Commission recommendation in December 15, 2021, and as Bill has mentioned, it went through the zoning hearing board and did have an extension just granted this past May of 2023. The lot, as it previously existed, had a one-story, single detached dwelling and a shed, both of which have been demolished. There were permits for that, and there was a driveway. The applicant is proposing a one-story office and manufacturing building with a loading dock, a total of 12 parking spaces, 11 of which are conventional spaces, and one is for ADA accessibility and stormwater management improvements for the lot. The uses are permitted in the L1, the limited industrial district in the township. There are no floodplains on this property, and they do have their MPDS permit, which they received in April of 2023. There are a total of nine waivers that were listed on the plans, plus we recognize the need for a tenth, which would be from Saldo. So, there's six from Saldo, there's four from the stormwater management. We've reviewed the plans. All of the requests are very minor in nature, and we would support the waiver requests from the applicant. I'm happy to go into detail on anything that you'd like to discuss.
So, Paul, my question about the waivers for the stormwater management, does any of this have to go to DEP? Since we passed that ordinance that said that any waivers the board couldn't just automatically do, was it because this was a plot, the application was before we had adopted that ordinance?
Correct.
Is that, okay.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to double check that.
Yes, you are correct.
The disturbance threat, the disturbance threshold for that is, is it one acre that, where it has to go to?
Correct. An MPDS permit is required over, if there's one acre of disturbance.
Okay, so this would qualify if it was, if the application was made today?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, the MPDS permit has been granted by the Chester County.
This is Mr. Cosgrove, by the way.
Yeah, that's the applicant.
Yeah, the waivers that Martha's talking about are separate from, or the discussion with DEP is separate from the one with the MPDS stuff. So, we have the stormwater management ordinance, which requires us to submit any waivers, I think, to DEP as part of a new program in Pennsylvania, so. Separate, separate things we all have to talk to DEP about.
Any more discussion?
Any more questions?
I'll make a motion that we adopt this Resolution 2023-13. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion from the crowd? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, new business, consider approval of purchase for Life Pack. You're welcome. Thanks for coming out. Consideration, approval to purchase for Life Pack CR2 defibrillators from Stryker Medical in the amount of $10,921.04. Lori, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, so we are purchasing, like it says, four new AEDs. Ours are in need of replacement, the batteries, we actually discussed this the other night, but the batteries at this point have become more expensive to, it's cheaper to just replace with new ones. So, the first four here, we're going to replace, we're actually trading in three, and we have a small grant. This is the total purchase price. We may end up getting reimbursed for a small percentage of this through our insurance company. They offer a grant for items like this.
We keep one up here and three downstairs.
That's right, yep.
Excellent. Any questions? All right, I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Considering, consider approval of purchase of a 2022 Ford Mustang Mach-E in the amount of $39,580 minus the trade-in value of $10,500 for a total of $29,080. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Thank you.
I was hoping you were going to be here, yeah. So, this is a replacement of the Township Manager vehicle. It's an all-electric vehicle. The EAC has been doing a lot of work and a lot of research to help us get to the point where we felt comfortable purchasing an electric vehicle. So, this, we have figured out a workaround where we can charge the vehicle in the interim, thanks to Sue. She told us that we could do that. It's a great price, yeah. It's CoStarz, so, and it comes with a warranty. They'll actually come pick the vehicle up. I just found out they'll come pick the vehicle up when it has to be maintained, so that's great. I don't have to drive it to Doylestown, so. The plan in the interim is to, we're going to charge it, we'll do, we're going to continue working on getting a fast charger installed. The EAC is continuing to help us get proposals on that. We actually had somebody out today looking at the facility. This will give us a little wiggle room to seek some grant funding to do the charging station, so that will come later, but in the interim, we can replace the vehicle, get an electric vehicle, and we can charge it here.
Good deal.
And Lori, I just wanted to confirm that you did say this was CoStarz, correct?
It is CoStarz, that's correct.
So, it was a nice savings.
Yeah.
Part of what helped us get the price we did. And is there an option for an extended warranty? Have you looked into that?
We did look into it, so there is an option, and we don't have to purchase that now. We can take it later if we want to. The extended warranty, I don't know if it would end up being, based on what's available, I don't know that it would end up being super beneficial for us here. The vehicle comes with a warranty, which I can show you that information, but it comes with a three-year, 36,000-mile warranty. The battery is, the biggest expense would end up being the battery. That isn't going to need to be replaced for 10 years, and as a municipality with a fleet replacement plan, I wouldn't expect us in 10 years to still have the vehicle. I would expect by that point, we've replaced it with new technology, but.
I want to thank everybody that helped out, the team effort to get our, I guess this is our first true full-blown electric vehicle.
Yeah.
So, EAC, Sue, everybody, thanks. Any discussion?
The EAC really put a lot of work into it.
So, just a couple of questions. Obviously, there are a lot of different electric vehicles that are available. There's, I mean, I'm familiar with, oh, there's a Volkswagen that's also available on somewhere price point. Was there a reason why we, this particular one was, like, chosen? Was it the best, most economical option?
It's the only one that's CoStarz.
Okay.
So, it's the only one that we can buy.
It's real easy.
We went through, Tina will tell you, we tried every possible iteration of an electric vehicle or a hybrid vehicle. As far as electric vehicles go, this is the only one that's CoStarz rated. And to, in order for us to purchase a vehicle for it to qualify for CoStarz, it has to be, a certain percentage of it has to be manufactured in the United States, so that's why Ford is one of, Ford is the biggest CoStarz dealership, so that's why this one is.
So, just from my education, if we were to purchase another American-made vehicle, but it's not CoStarz, but it was less expensive than this?
We can't buy it.
We can't purchase it.
We'd have to go out to bid.
We have to go, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, this is based on my own research. This is very comparable to what the, like, for example, the Volkswagen is, or some other vehicles, but, and the trade-in value is, is good. What is the current vehicle?
It's a 2016 Escape.
Escape, okay. Yeah, that's pretty fair.
Don't tell them that.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
The charging station.
Can you come up to the microphone? Sorry.
That's all right. Any time. We know who you are, but if you would, tell us your name and address.
Sue Aaron, 130 Valley Corporate. The charging station, were you going to put in a big charging station, or like a little Level 2?
We're going to do a temporary measure of just like the, what did I, what's the voltage I said it was?
240.
240, yeah.
220 or?
220, for now.
That's perfect.
Yes, that's what we're doing for now, and then we do have proposals. We're looking into installing a fast charger, so that would be the level 2.
There's a Level 2, and then there's the really big one, if you had a fleet.
Yeah, no, so we're looking at a Level 2.
Yeah, the 220, I mean, if you get here in the morning, plug it in.
So, that's exactly the plan, and then the Level 2 charger will come later.
Yeah, and that's only a few hundred, and it's not, I think you just plug it into the 220, but.
All right, so we have a motion, a second? All in favor? Aye. Good deal. Consider approval of 2023-2024 Crossing Guard Services Agreement in the amount not to exceed $20,003. Cost is shared between the Township and the Phoenixville Area School District, and as I understand it, this is something that we split off, we used to have an employee years ago that did this, we tied him with the school district to save some money, and they take care of it, and we compensate them, correct?
Other way around, but yes. We, the contract is between the Township and the Crossing Guard Service. We pay the full amount, the school district reimburses us 50%.
Okay, sounds better. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
And this is, I'll second it, but I just wanted to make the comment, this is for the Crossing Guard at Pot House and Trotters Drive, is that correct?
I don't think the contract actually specifies the location of the Crossing Guard. We talked about that, yeah, wherever it's needed, yeah.
But it's only for one Crossing Guard?
It's for a certain number of hours.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion, a second? All in favor? Aye?
Yeah. It goes by an hour, yeah, there's, we have an hourly rate.
Consideration of approval of Vince McClatchy Stonework Proposal in the amount of $9,800 to repair mortar cracks on both sides of the wall at Anderson Cemetery. And this one I wanted to discuss with the crew. I did stop out there, and I looked at the quote. I wanted to see if we could get a, maybe more of a detailed quote to show specifically what is going to be done. It is starting to crack. It's not falling off like it was years ago when we had a major repair, so there's no foundation work, and I wanted to discuss that and see what everybody thought, to maybe ask the contractor to give more of a description of what he's doing. So, unless anybody feels strongly that we need to move forward, really, I'm going to make a motion that we push this back to next month and ask for a re-quote or a more extensive quote.
I'm okay with that, because Lori, didn't the Historical Commission want to chime in on this as well?
I would like the Historic Commission to chime in on it. It has been provided to them. I've not heard any feedback from them, but that would give an opportunity for additional discussion.
As their liaison, I will push it on their agenda this month.
Great.
Does this come out of, the Historical Commission has allocated a certain amount of funding, does this wouldn't come out of their allocation? Okay, this is property maintenance, parking maintenance costs, okay?
We did budget for this work for this year, but there, it's not, like Bob said, it's not an imminent danger at this point, so there's no issue with taking some more time and pushing it back.
I mean, the quote is pretty sparse on details. We just want to make sure that we can evaluate that we've gotten the services that we've bargained for.
Absolutely.
So, at this point, do we make a motion not to, or just?
You don't have to, we can just table it.
We're going to table that. Okay, authorize advertisement of conditional use hearing on July 12, 2023 at 6:00 PM for Provco Pinegood Phoenixville LLC. And do you want to give any explanation of that first?
So, this is the Wawa, this is just, we just need authorization to advertise the date for the conditional use hearing that has been scheduled for July 12.
All right, I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments in the public? Okay, all in favor? Aye? Authors, authorize advertisement of Board of Supervisors regular business meeting scheduled for July 12, 2023 at 7:00 to begin at 8:30, or immediately following that conditional use hearing? I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Well, I want the motion to say immediately following the conditional use hearing, or do you have to advertise a time?
We have to advertise a time, but that's why we put the "or" in there.
Are you permitted, sorry, did I hurt you? Are you permitted to cut the conditional use hearing short in order to stick? You are, okay.
Yeah, but they've been advised of the cutoff time.
Okay, so you have to put a time?
They'll set a new date. We can't limit their time for their hearing, but we've told them there's a hard stop that night, and at that hearing, bring your calendars, we're going to schedule a new date.
Okay, if they're not done. It might be done. If it's not done, then we'll reschedule.
Okay.
Any other discussion? So, I made a motion. Did you second that?
I don't know, Tina, did I second it? Okay, I will second it.
Any comments from the public? Yes?
Why not just reschedule the board meeting?
We have to pay the bills.
Yeah, the amount of meetings that we have and timing it with finances, we had to hit this night. All right, any other comments? We have a motion, a second? All in favor? Aye? All right, two-minute reports, board liaisons. Anything to report?
So, for the green energy transition, the VVP Committee meeting, they did meet last week. I was unable to attend due to a park commitment, but I do understand that they are going to be presenting to the EAC, I believe, later this month, and then we are thinking in July at the workshop meeting? Lori, they're going to, that's the thought, that they will be presenting the transition plan for acceptance, not approval, just acceptance by the board. We'll have a discussion at the workshop meeting in July, and then probably August, if we decide to approve it, that could be on the agenda in August. Is that consistent with what we've discussed with? You're looking at me quizzically.
Because I'll have to look into a little bit further. I don't know exactly what the, I haven't seen enough detail on what the requirements are for adopting it, so I can't promise August can happen. It might depend on what the.
No, no, and we don't have to. There's no, I think the consultants that have been engaged on that project need to be disengaged from the project, and so to, the acceptance, where we actually receive it and say we acknowledge that there was a scope of work for the project, you've completed the scope of work, whether or not we approve anything that's in the plan and we actually want to implement it in the township, we have to acknowledge that they did the work that was, they were provided the grant funding for.
Right.
And that's, that's really the, what has the time limit on it. And again, I think if we did that in July or even in August, that would be fine, but we need, we can't let it slip too far into the past that.
Didn't Jonathan say that by September it had to happen from the board, the acceptance had to happen by the board by September?
I'm not sure if that was prior to the grant being extended. There was an extension issued just recently on the grant period.
Okay.
Are the consultants planning to come to present the plan? Is that, did they, is that what they indicated?
There was some discussion recently about them coming first, I think, to the EAC. I think they want to go to the EAC first.
Yeah, that was discussed at last month's EAC meeting, because the EAC actually brought up a really good point. This is an environmental project that they felt they should at least look at and have some comments made, and then give their approval or not to the Board of Supervisors for us to review in July, at our July workshop. And then I thought that's when Jonathan had said August might be too soon, that we could accept it in September.
Maybe that was what it, yeah.
Okay, okay.
But not that that was a deadline?
Right.
Gotcha.
Right. And he said that accepting it didn't necessarily mean that.
We don't have to implement it. It just means, it just means that there was grants that all, the participating townships acquired for the work, that the consultants did the work that was asked of them, and that we can then, that they can basically be released from the engagement.
And I think the county, we got an email today from someone from the county, I don't know, the Planning Commission, I'm not really quite sure who he was, who was actually also reviewing it to make sure that the plans fit the scope of work that they were expecting in order to get reimbursed. No.
And they've been, so, I mean, we do have the, I mean, I have the preliminary plans, and they have been provided to Lori. If you feel, I mean, it's premature, you think at this point, though, to circulate them to the rest of the board for consideration, because they haven't been, they haven't gone through the EAC yet?
No, I don't see any reason that we can't circulate it.
So, if you do.
But I don't know that it's been approved by the Chester County Planning Commission first. I mean, if they make changes in it, wouldn't that?
This is the first I'm hearing that they would be required to make changes for us to.
Let me see if I can find that email.
Because East Pike Lynn and West Vincent, they are approving their versions of the plan this month.
Right.
Accepting their versions of the plan.
Yeah, I think that the plan can be circulated to the board, and I think we can stick with our timeline of discussing it at the July workshop.
Okay, since you already have that, would you, would you mind circulating? Okay. The only other, so that's, sorry, that was way more than a two-minute report, but the other report is the Regional Planning Committee met earlier, met this month, and the one thing that I think is of interest perhaps to the township and its residents is the fact that Phoenixville Borough, they made the announcement that Phoenixville Borough has passed a plastic ban, a plastic bag ordinance. So, they are going to be phasing out, in certain circumstances, plastic bags, I think Styrofoam, and plastic straws for businesses. It's not going to be an immediate ban. They're going to have a phase in implementation to allow businesses in the borough to, you know, cycle through the inventory that they have, but it's, I think it's of interest for neighboring municipalities. And I believe that the wording of the ordinance will be in the next month's minutes, but I've been told that they'll provide us a copy, an advanced copy for us to discuss.
Great, thanks, Danielle. Susan, anything to report? All right, Mark?
We had our Fire String Committee meeting with Bob, myself, and our fire department crew there. It was, I think it was the last one in our set with our consultant. We're going to finalize our plans for moving forward with discussions on the fire department operations and funding and all these other fun, fun things that we talk about at our meetings. So, we'll probably set up a, well, it seems that we'll be setting up a small committee to supervisors, to members of the fire department, and our Township Manager to continue discussions into the future without this consultant, and that'll help us keep things on track and ensure we have proper levels of service through the township for fire and EMS, so.
I want to thank you guys for all the work you've put into this. It's been really productive. I'm learning a lot, really didn't know what I didn't know, so it's been great, and I think it's going in a very good direction, so.
And we plan to present that to the board at a workshop in September.
Yeah.
So that we can bring everybody up to speed on what we've been, what we've been working on.
I was just going to ask you which month that was. Thank you.
Yep, September.
That's it for me.
All right, Martha?
The Historical Commission is still working on their idea of coming up with a historical district and how they're going to present that to the board. It's going to, it's still a work in progress. It's not anything that we're going to have to deal with in the near future, but it is just something that they are, are still working on, and they also discussed the preparations for the presentation at the Phoenixville Country Club next week. But I think you're going to make that in announcements, so I won't let you deal with that. And I did find this email, but it was part of a chain as far as the clean energy was concerned. This guy said he was going to. This guy said he was gonna have it done by May 26th, so probably what you have is okay to share with us, so, sorry about that.
It's all right. And I had a meeting with the chief yesterday for the police, and things are going really well there. I really appreciate everything you're doing, especially with more involvement at the schools, and a lot of improvement in training and technology, so great job. And I saw an unsolicited letter come through from somebody, so hats off to Sergeant McCarthy and Officer McNelly for going above and beyond the call of duty. Really appreciate what they, they do out there. Okay, Township Manager?
I am going to actually just throw it right over to Paul, so that he can give an update on Paul Lehman Drive. I don't have anything else other than what was already discussed.
Could I, could I just add another compliment for the police force? So, because Sergeant McCarthy and I both have children in the fifth grade, I gave a presentation for Career Day on being a township supervisor, and I followed Sergeant McCarthy, who gave his presentation on being a township police officer. So I said it wasn't really fair, because I don't have all the equipment that he has. But he did a wonderful, he did a wonderful job, and actually I think that the kids were really engaged in both presentations. It was nice. So, he did a great job.
And actually, I wanted to say something too about the officers present. I attended the kindergarten graduation as well as the fifth grade graduation, and, you know, when, when you have a five-year-old and a 10-year-old that says, "Miss Martha, would you please come to my graduation?" I don't have children, so I, you can just read sucker right across my forehead, and of course I had to go. And everyone was just really pleased to see Sergeant McCarthy there, so thank you.
All right, Paul Lehman?
All right. So yes, so Dolee Construction submitted a pay application to the township on just last Friday, June 9th. What we're doing right now is we're, we're doing site inspections, going through the punch list, making sure that all the quantities, et cetera, match, and therefore what we'll be doing is we'll be preparing our thoughts for the pay application for the next board supervisors' meeting.
Okay, but everything looks pretty good up there from what you can see?
Yeah, everything looks terrific. I don't know if you've been up there, but it looks very nice. The whole road's been painted black. You know, the, the, I'm sorry, the culvert is working well, you know, so it's, it's been going, it went really well.
Good, can't wait to see how it holds up under the first storm.
Yeah, and we didn't hit rock either.
That's a beautiful thing, yeah. Okay, Chief?
Good evening. Thank you again for those, those compliments. We really appreciate it. So I have the police activity report for May here in front of me. Did you have any questions on that report? The only other thing I have is just a reminder, next Thursday here at the police station is the Second Annual Coons with a Cop. And this year, we're going bigger and better, so we're gonna have a DJ, and there's gonna be a bounce house for the kids. We'll have the ice cream, obviously, and we'll have our cars out for display. The fire company will be there. EMS will be there. And, yeah, so it should be, last, last year was a, was well-attended, and we got to wear it out. I think a lot more this year. I know Officer Henderson went to the schools and dispersed it through the schools, so we're hoping to have a bigger turnout this year than we did last year.
Good deal.
And that's, that's starting at five?
Six o'clock.
Six? We have our executive session then. Maybe we could have a postponement of our executive session, so we can go in the bouncy house. We'll think, we'll, thank you.
All right. Thanks again, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Paul, anything else besides Paul Lehman you want to report on? You kind of already...
No, that, that's it.
Okay. And Fire Department?
As the chief mentioned, we're gonna make them look good with fire trucks next week. Twenty-three calls for the month, excuse me, twenty-three fire calls for the month, 171 EMS calls for the month, 168 man-hours in training, and a reminder that according to the DCNR, we are still in a D2 severe drought phase. So it's summertime, we like to have recreational fires. Just be careful, be aware, be prepared, so. Questions, comments?
Yeah.
Are any of you guys, are any of you guys heading up to Canada?
No.
Yeah, we could do some help. God, the winds changed. You guys do great work, thank you.
I like the look on his face.
It's like, what are they paying? Uh, okay, additional business, discussion of agenda items for upcoming workshop meetings.
So Danielle set us up with the nice segue there. We don't have any topics planned for next week's workshop. So, with the complex of Coons with a Cop and the Historical Commission's event, it's up to the board if you'd like to, if, if the board has anything to discuss at next week's meeting, we can hold the workshop. But the next topics we have are planned for July.
I'll be away next week, so you guys...
I'd like to take my kids to Coons with a cop.
I thought maybe. I'd like to take myself there, yeah. So yeah, so we can cancel next week's, next week's workshop.
Yeah, especially if we have no agenda.
No, we held the topics, we were talking about the clean energy transition plan, but we wanted Jonathan to be able to be there. He's not available in June, so I think it makes sense. And with the calendar falling this month with our, the meetings being back-to-back weeks, it makes sense to hold it. So the other issue, then, the July meeting, we have the topics for July. We're gonna talk about the clean energy transition plan. We are also going to, at that meeting, have, I have a meeting with architects on the municipal complex project. So at that meeting, I will have architects presenting their proposals to the board for the feasibility study for the municipal complex renovations.
Could I add on the pla, the plastic bag ordinance, just as a discussion?
For July?
For July? What, what's the date in July?
So that, we need to talk about that. That, that's the one that we need a new date for. Based on everybody's schedules, I think the only available date is Monday, the 24th.
Okay.
Yeah.
So shift from the 27th over?
From the 27th to the 24th.
Okay.
Is that okay for everybody?
Yeah, I think I'm the problem, because I'm coming back from a trip, so.
What time are we setting that up for?
They are usually for seven. It sounds like we actually have sort of a packed agenda that night. Would you guys like to start earlier?
If, we can, we can move, why don't we move the plast, it's, there's no rush. Why don't we move the plastic bag ordinance discussion for August, then, if we already have a packed agenda?
Okay, August would be, August would be good.
So we're changing the, normally the 27th to the 24th?
To the 24th.
We'll need to advertise for that.
Yep, we will advertise that. We'll put that on the agenda next month to get authorization to advertise.
Okay, starting normally at seven, do we want to move that up still, or leave it at seven?
If you guys are comfortable with seven, we can do seven. We could start at 6:30, given the architect presentations. I don't expect them to be very long, it's just the feasibility studies.
Okay, let's lock it in for seven o'clock on the 24th.
Yeah, we'll just leave it at seven.
Done. Anything else?
Nope.
We have the fire company coming in, that would be September.
September.
And August.
August.
We still have for the 24th?
Correct.
Oh, wait, so you got that one. Okay.
So we'll do the plastic bag, we can discuss the plastic bag ban there, and I tentatively thought that we could talk about grant, an update on our current grant status and identifying future plans for grants, which that might be a good segue into that.
Good deal. All right.
Um, so, under additional business, if I could just make a comment to, I'm sorry. If I could just make a comment to board liaisons, um, when I was treasurer, I reminded our commissions that had budgets to start their budget process, to have it approved in August, so that Lori would have it by the end of August, so that she could actually start working on the budget. So, I just started doing that in, in, you know, June or July, so if you guys could do that, if you guys have our liaisons with commissions, committees that have budgets. So, that's it.
Good deal. All right, announcements?
So I knew that the chief was going to handle the Coons with a Cop announcement, so the only other one that we had is the Historical Commission event that Martha mentioned, so that is on, it's next Thursday, the 22nd, at 7:00 o'clock at the Phoenixville Country Club, and they are doing a presentation on mid-century modern architecture. Mid-century modern architecture in the township. And the township building is closed on Monday for Juneteenth.
Okay, any other announcements? Public comment? Yes, can you let us know who you are and where you live?
I'm Paula Movila, and I live at 78 South Spring Lane, and forgive me, I'm gonna be reading from my notes. I just wanna make sure I get it.
That's fine.
So I'm here to express my discontent with the way the proposed residential development at 70 South Spring Lane has been handled by the township. I reached out to the previous township manager about three years ago to bring the severe stormwater issue on, on South Spring Lane to his attention. He said there was nothing that the township could do about it, understandably, but he did assure me that if and when the vacant lot for 70 South Spring Lane sold and plans for development came in, that the township would do everything in their power to protect the health and welfare of the residents of that street. The township's own stormwater ordinance gives the township the right to disapprove any design that would result in the continuation of existing stormwater problems, so it's expected that that would be taken into consideration. Last December, I learned that the lot had in fact sold, and I reached out to the zoning officer with my concerns about how this development might affect my property, which is directly downhill. She said that no plans had been received yet, but offered to go over them with me when they did. Imagine my surprise when I reached out a few months later to learn that not only had the plans been submitted, but they had already been approved. I know the township was not obligated to involve me in this decision or keep me informed, but in a case when you have very serious stormwater issues and very concerned neighbors that could be directly affected and that have institutional knowledge about the site, it's very short-sighted not to. Then I looked on the township website to see how to contact my elected officials about my concerns and found a single phone number or email address to contact any of the supervisors, and just a general supervisor's inbox. I emailed that inbox multiple times and haven't received any responses. I submitted a write-to-no request, which was denied, because apparently copies of the plan cannot be provided due to copyright. I did, however, receive access to the correspondence between the applicant's engineer and the township engineer, and my review of that brought up some serious concerns. So in one paragraph of the township's review, the township engineer states that the site contains four specimen trees and that specimen trees shall not be removed according to the township's tree ordinance. The applicant replied that they will address the issue of specimen trees separately. There's no additional correspondence on that matter in what was made available to me, yet as we speak, there's not a single tree left on the site. The applicant would be required to replant a significant number of trees if there was enough room on the site to do so, but since there's not, I'm told that they will be paying a fee in lieu of planting. Last I heard, though, there's no plans on how to use those ones. In another paragraph of the engineer's review, the township engineer asks for proposed drainage to more closely mimic existing drainage patterns, to which the applicant incorrectly replied that the current drainage flows across the property in the same location as the proposed piping and discharge. That is incorrect. The township proceeded to approve the plan, and even though the plan discharge, approve the plan, even though the planned discharge point is directly onto my property about 30 feet away from the current point of discharge. There's nothing in the correspondence indicating that the volume and flow rate of water coming onto the site was properly accounted for. I couldn't really trace what the calculations were and how it was determined to begin with, or that anything to indicate that the water now being channeled onto my property will come out at a rate that does not cause erosion or damage to my home. There was no discussion in the correspondence about investigating wetland indicators that existed on the site, which would be regulated by Section 404 of the Clean Water Act and would require a permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And there was no discussion of how the applicant would handle the federally protected birds that nested in the trees that were removed. The township manager, township engineer, and zoning officer were nice enough to meet at our property to discuss the approved plans for a fee of $135 an hour, but despite our bringing the incorrect discharge point and other concerns to their attention, I received an email from the township manager flatly stating that they will continue to move forward with the plans that are based on incorrect assumptions. I believe the township would be wise to reexamine its policy around involving neighbors in the discussion of development plans which directly affect them, and to give their concerns more serious consideration before moving forward with plan approvals. And the township should exercise its right under the stormwater ordinance to disapprove plans that would potentially devalue the surrounding properties by exacerbating existing stormwater problems. And I think the township should enforce the existing tree ordinance and protect the wetlands and specimen trees, the carbon that they absorb and the ecosystems they support. And just a suggestion that the township use the fee in lieu funds for tree removals to support community tree planting efforts, for instance, through the biannual PHS tree tenders program like Phoenixville Borough and other surrounding communities do. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to start, or do you want to, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Andrew Wagner, Palma's partner, also live at 78 South Spring Lane. I just want to thank you for the time to get up here. I don't mean to elongate it for everybody. And just, I know you're all busy with a lot of things in this township, and I'm sorry if there's angst in some of the words that are coming out, but that's because while you have a lot of things to run, this is my only home and her only home. So financially, it's the biggest thing we have to deal with, so. Any threat to it is, really kind of sets your blood up a little bit. But that being said, I'm not gonna stand in front of you today and, you know, even insinuate that no development should have been there. I get it. Things need to move forward sometimes. We understand that. But we love living in this community because of its focus on nature, its beautiful conservancy, and the safety of it. And those things have, sadly, they've been put into question for us. I think that's what we're doing up here. The plan's been approved, they're starting to build now, so I'm not, we're not trying to aim at getting everything stopped and changed now. It's already been done. What we wanted to do is bring it to your attention in case something should change in the future regarding some of the circumstances. Those circumstances Palma mentioned, the red-tailed hawks. Their mating and nesting season starts in April and goes to August. Most likely, there was eggs in those trees, in those nests. Most likely. We, we won't know, because they've been taken down, and I don't think that anyone even looked or investigated it. There was potential wetland markers there. Again, I don't think anyone even looked or mentioned it. They just went right ahead and, you know, cleared it. All these things, I'm bringing them up because they could have been alleviated with just a simple meeting. And I, I totally understand that if there's no variances requested, no meetings required. This might be one of them situations, because of the potential impacts, where you potentially, potentially, I'm not making any accusation here, run afoul of not only federal laws, but state laws and your own ordinances for possibly exacerbating a water issue. The only thing that we straight disagree with was the water exit point. I thought we were pretty clear at the meeting, or I, I thought I was. That I disagree that it was accurate at all. It is not coming in at the same point, and things were based off of that. The plan was based totally off of its mirroring the same, and it is absolutely not. It's 25 feet away from the closest discharge, discharge point and 50 feet away from the next discharge point. And that's important in my yard because of the way the topography is. As it stands now, the new site will eject water downhill at the back of my house. Before, it entered way up north of the lot and followed a swale, whether it be natural or was made when the house was made in the 80s, I don't know. I don't want to get into too many details on this, but all of the water protection mechanisms in my topography, and if they were man-made when the house was built, they're being circumvented by the new exit point. All this is to say that involving the community in something like this, while it might not be the policy now, it really should be, because of the implications of this. If water hits the back of my house, and I really hope it doesn't, I hope these plans are correct. But if it does, because of a new exit point that I can see has a, not an advantageous slope to it, and because we didn't get accurate flow rates, and you may have them, but we weren't, they weren't readily available when we had the meeting, that really highlights the fact that if you were to reevaluate this under your own statute of not exacerbating a current problem, how would you even enforce that if you don't have a current flow rate? How would you know if it's higher? How would you know if it's lower? What's the catchment area? I mean, like, that would be pertinent to the people that it could back up on. And I don't know if you've all seen this. And I don't know if you've all seen this, but it's quite a site when it's running full bore. And, you know, we presented video evidence of it, we got three neighbors to corroborate that it is not the same exit point. And frankly, I just, I was really let down that it moved forward based on that it was the same, because it was not. The other things just highlight the fact that I think more due diligence could have been done here. And at the very least, I get it that there was no variance required, but man, like, that could have been a federal law that you're running afoul of, it could be state laws, and it could be your own statute. So like, maybe in the future, involve in a directly related water problem, because I think everybody knows water's a common enemy, right? There's schools of law that contradict each other, common enemy, and I forget what the other one is. But what I'm meaning to say is, because of the fact that it's a common enemy to everyone in cases of stormwater, maybe bring in the neighbors that are directly connected in a stormwater issue. Maybe not for other things, that would be up to people with more experience than me. But I really didn't have anything to say in this after everything was approved. And then you were, like Palma said, you guys were nice enough to come out and give us a voice, but it was already after everything was approved. And I do disagree with some of it, and at this point, we're just gonna have to see how it works out, and I don't think there's a whole lot of more options now if it is in fact dangerous to my property and its value. So, yeah, I think the point of it was, again, I apologize if there was angst in some of the words, but it is our home and it's our only one. So, if there's things that we can learn out of this, I think maybe it'll be that more community involvement for new building, at least if it's pertinent to stormwater, because how common an issue it is for everyone, and it really depends on topography. I don't wanna go on and on. I appreciate the time, thank you very much.
First off, we're sorry you're going through what you are, it's a tough spot to be in.
Paul, can I ask you about taking the trees down? Like, I mean, that's obviously very concerning, we have a tree ordinance, I know this is like part of it development. But, I mean, can you tell me about the trees? Like, do we have, like, there's no way we can take, prevent people from taking down specimen trees, or should we have a different ordinance? Because that's concerning to hear that, you know, specimen trees, which to me means very large, you know, important trees are being taken down. How is that working in our township?
Yeah, well, the tree permanent ordinance, you know, you can take down trees that are diseased or in the way of construction and the township did grant the tree clearing permit, and there is a note on the plans that state that the trees will be replaced in accordance, in coordination with the township zoning officer. So that note was added to the plans. The trees that were taken down are to be replaced, but it has to be coordinated with the township zoning officer. Again, I believe it was about eighty-some trees that would need to be installed, so that would be reforesteding the entire lot. So I think that, like, I think there's going to be some kind of discussion on how best to handle this once the lot is fully constructed, because there's no reason to put up the trees right now as the houses, you know, and the improvements are being installed.
So do we have a plan in our township for tracking that? I mean, so how, like, tell me exactly how that's gonna work? Like, when you say, like, is Kim keeping track of the fact that they owe the township eighty trees somewhere, or?
Yes, I mean, I would assume that is, because they still would have to get a building permit and things like that. So I don't know the exact mechanism that Kim does, and I don't wanna speak on behalf of that, but I do know that, I asked for that note to be added onto the plans, which the applicant did and were, was on the approved plan.
So Lori, can you speak to how that works? I mean, so, because obviously that was a really important ordinance we passed, and are we tracking that as a township to make sure they do replace the trees, or we do something with that?
Yes, she has that, she has all of the information, she's aware of it. That's something that she documents when she issues the permit, and that's something that she'll work in conjunction with Paul once they go through their building permit process. We don't have a building permit yet.
And so what would typically happen, Paul? So like, would we have them put the trees somewhere else, or are they gonna put them in our parks, or?
Yeah, I mean, I guess we'd have to, I'm sorry, yeah, I guess we'd have to see how close you can populate the trees on the lot, because if you tried to jam all eighty on it, they'll all die, because they won't have the ability to grow to the mature height. So what the balance will have to be, like I said, there'll have to be a mechanism that Kim will have to, you know, probably present to the board to say, hey, you know, the applicant was required eighty, could install forty-five, I'm just giving a generic number, where does the balance get installed?
And do we ever work with the adjoining neighbors? Because I would think that the trees might have been helping with some of the water. You know, like, when we went through the tree ordinance process, we learned that the trees absorb a lot of water. So if we've lost big specimen trees, I would think that could be also impacting their stormwater. So do we work with them to see if the trees being put back could help these neighbors in some way? Like, maybe they could be put in certain spots to help, you know, reabsorb the water like they probably had been doing?
Yeah, I'd assume that the applicant would probably put most of the trees in the rear of the yard and the side of the yard, because the front of their yard, in the front of their house is where their stormwater management is being installed. They're putting in a recharge bed. I apologize, I don't know the details in front of me, but that's where the primary area of stormwater management is being installed on their property. The back of the yard has, well, it has an easement back there that from the 1950s, that's not being utilized, and there's a proposed shed, but the balance of the lot in the rear yard can be populated with trees. I just don't think that there would be physically enough room to have eighty trees planted and eighty trees to mature to a healthy size.
And do we have a system for, like, what to do with the other forty? Like, should we be thinking about that as part of our ordinances? Or do we have a process to say, let's put them in the parks or somewhere else?
There's a couple of options. Typically, you can take the balance of the trees and have them installed on like parkland or township-owned land, like this.
Or the Pick and Rec Reserve.
Or you can take fees in lieu, and that can be put into like a fund, or it can go to a general fund, or it can go to like a park and rec fund if we had one of those, you know, but we don't, we don't only have a dedicated park and rec, and we don't have a lot of parks and rec, but, but like, that's, I'd see it.
And so Lori, do we have those processes, like that backup plan? Or should that, is that something we should be working on at a workshop to say, like, okay, like, would Kim know what to do now with the forty extra trees, or?
That, the language in the ordinance, I mean, truthfully, I think this is the first time this has come up with the tree ordinance, since the tree ordinance has passed. With this number of trees, we've issued a ton of tree permits, but with this number of trees needing to be replaced, with there not being space for the trees to go on the property, yeah, we will need to figure out where, if the township wants forty trees planted on its property somewhere, we could require that. But that's why, that's where the discussion of the fee in lieu came up, because it's probably not realistic to assume that we can put forty trees somewhere even on township property.
Although the EAC would love trees, so.
They would, yes, they would.
Okay. And Paul, could you also speak to the, unless you could have more questions on that, but I just wanted to hear about the access, the exit point that they're raising?
So the plans that were designed by, I believe it was Evie Walsh, they had taken a field survey and they had provided a survey of where the waters were going. Now, the waters, there's an area of, in the front of the yard, that's collecting the impervious of the yard, some off-site areas, and that's being discharged in the front of the yard. There is an area in the back where there's waters being collected and it's being piped around, it's going out to an energy dissipator, and I think that's what they're explaining, that it's going towards the rear of the property in a different area. When you look at the topography, it was, it was my thought that that's where the water was going. I know the applicant feels differently, that it was going down, I believe, further down, maybe towards the side of their house, based off of what was there. You know, the, there were trees, there were, I don't wanna say it was meadow, but it was taller grass, like unkept, but it wasn't like a ridiculously abandoned lot. So, the where the proposed riprap apron, the energy dissipator is located, it is in that area going down towards the corner of their house. If it was shifted down, it would be just, the water would be going towards the side of their house. So if you tried to pipe it and turn it, you wouldn't have the area to put in a energy dissipator of the proper size to slow down the water that's being collected off-site upstream.
So you're saying the water is gonna be collected on their property, it's not gonna flow down into their yard?
It's collected, the, it's collected on, via an inlet in the rear yard on 70 South Spring, which is the house that's being built, and it's being piped around the back of their property, and then it's being outletted into an energy dissipator. Previously, the way the water would run across the lot, and it would just go across the grass, the long grass, the trees, et cetera, and then it would just go over into their lot. Now there's a stormwater management facility in the front yard, and then there's an energy dissipator in the backyard, which is controlling the off-site waters that are entering the property.
I just, you know, can I add something? I just, for anybody who gets an actual picture here, sorry. So, the water we're talking about is a funnel of water collecting from sixteen homes. So you can kinda get an idea of the situation here. When we are having a major rainstorm, and when I say major, probably once or twice a month in this time of year, it's enough water coming through the backyard of my home for an adult male to put a kayak in and ride down four houses. This is, we're not talking about water that could wash away my paving stone. We're talking about water that at one point took the neighbor's jungle gym for their kids and swept the three houses down. This is not water that if it butts up against, you know, two inches of soil, it'll just correct itself and go down. It's moving with such velocity and at such a quantity that if you change the direction of it, like, it has been changed, without having my swale there to let it ride downhill and slow it down and turn it, going to the back of my house, it would take a couple hundred feet for it to correct itself. So coming out of a collected pipe now, where it used to dissipate across a property, changing that even five feet would be problematic, but now aiming it at the back of my house almost guarantees that it will, in my estimation, slam into the back of my house. And I just kinda gave you an idea of what kind of water we're talking about. If you stepped in it, it might be up here, and it will be moving at a velocity. This is not, this is a safety issue, but at this point, it could devalue my home to nothing.
I did watch your video, by the way, that you sent over. And so just so you know, when you send an email in, it does disperse out, and we all gotta look at that, so.
Yeah. And for items like land development and things like that, if they're technical questions, we tend to pass them on to township staff because they're the experts on these subjects. So rather than answer an unqualified opinion, we'll pass it on to them, and that's why you don't necessarily hear it from us, but immediately you'll probably hear from like Lori or from Paul. So when you do get an email from them, it's because they've seen the email that you sent to us and we're, we pass it on to them.
And shortly after seeing that, I think that's when you had the visit where it came out, so we did discuss it.
We're very cognizant of the fact that no one of us speaks for the board, where we are collectively the board. But I have seen the lot, I've driven by the lot, and I've also spoken to some of your neighbors about it, and I'd heard about the clear cutting of the trees and the fact that there were nesting hawks in the trees.
And I just wanna say that we weren't expecting them to solve this problem. I guess I said sixteen homes, but we were expecting it, if the solution is to not make my problem worse, because it's on the razor's edge of being a problem. Right now, I wouldn't have to report it. If that thing touches my patio, I gotta report that.
Like disclose it?
Disclose, I'm sorry, disclose.
Right. It's a challenge when you're in the swale to start with, and you have all that going down, and then infill comes with the house being built long after the others. So it's a, it's a tough one to navigate.
So Paul, are you saying that the water is going, in layman's terms, is what you just said earlier meaning that the water's going to be absorbed by what you described? Or is it going to be going down, like he just described, in a different direction?
Can I just ask a clarifying question, too? Is the concern that perhaps when these storm management facilities are constructed, they will address the stormwater issue, but right now, they have not been constructed yet, and the trees have been clear cut, and we don't have a building permit yet in place? And so maybe, are there two concerns? The fact that there is an interim problem, perhaps?
No, no, interim problem.
No, I just wanna make sure I understand.
Yeah, thank you for asking, but no, it's not an interim problem, the concern about is the redirection, the artificial diversion of the water further back to the lot. We've always been able to manage it as it came in naturally. With the trees down, it's gonna be a little worse, but I don't think that should overwhelm our swale. Moving it to its new position, and I just wanna be clear, is absolutely different, even though the plan revolves around the fact that it is the same, it is not. It's coming out now downhill toward my house, and with the volume of water, it's gonna let go out of a collected pipe and some riprap, a few feet of riprap or large stones that dissipate energy. I don't think they're gonna be able to keep up with this much water, and at this angle, the first thing that can stop is the back of my house. And I think it was a mistake to approve that plan on that assumption that it was the same. Even if you put it to where it used to go, collecting it and ejecting it anywhere is gonna be a problem. My neighbors are concerned, but I'm very concerned. Like I said, I showed you video evidence of it, the assumption was wrong, it's never going to be right. And I don't have a whole lot of options left, because when I found out about it, I was very disappointed.
So Paul, can you respond? I mean, I guess I'm not sure what, where the disconnect is.
Well, the lot, as was existing, the drainage would go across the lot. Now, the house, the driveway, some of the upstream areas are now being collected into a proposed stormwater facility in the front yard. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think it's something to the effect of, like, seventy-five feet by eighteen feet by two and a quarter feet deep worth of stone and voids, plus it's a little bit of a sump to capture the water and to control that whole front half of the lot. So there's already a control measure that's put in there. Additionally, the water that's going-
So just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but so are you responding, so like you're saying what Danielle was saying is right, once that's built, that's gonna take this water that we're talking, hearing about?
It's gonna take, it's gonna-
That's just the new impervious.
That's just for the new impervious. That water coming down the funnel from sixteen homes is being put directly in a pipe and coming right over my property. That will, the rain guards in the front, while they're great, and I think there's this smart move to require them and have them there, that is just for the new runoff from the house. The water being funneled now into a pipe, that will do nothing for that. It will never touch it, because it's going right from the neighbor's lot into this new pipe. It has no bearing on this conversation. It really doesn't.
Part of this could be oversight from when the original development was built?
I think it was, I think, yeah, but that's kind of a-
My current problem is, in the fifties, they didn't require plans.
And I get it, but that's a ship that's already sailed and it's not, what we can do is not make my problem worse. It's already sort of dangerous to little children maybe in playhouses, but, you know, it really looks like it's gonna be bad in my home at this point.
The original plans from 1958, I believe it was like Valley Forge Corporation, the grading that was proposed for the entire area was to have drainage go from the, basically the front of the lots to swale around the back and then collected to what was an easement that was gonna go in the back of several properties. I think there was about five properties, then it was gonna turn and go towards the existing home back in the fifties. That easement was never, the storm structures and piping were never installed, and it looks as if when it was built, or as the site was developed, they pushed the dirt up to the hill, so they changed the originally approved drainage pattern. So even if today, you would go in and you would put these storm inlets in the back of the property, they would serve no good because of the way that the topography has changed over whether it was land development. You know, again, nobody was here in the 1950s or 60s or 70s when this was being constructed. So now, the, you know, this one particular lot, the drainage that's going around the back of the property is the drainage that was coming onto their property. It's not, there's not an addition going into that inlet, and it's going around. And the pipe that was sized, it was to be required for the twenty-five-year storm, they sized it for the hundred years, for the hundred-year storm. And then the riprap apron, which is gonna be put down to slow down the velocity, is sized to be, I believe it's fourteen feet by ten feet long, or something like that. Again, I apologize, I don't have these numbers in front of me. But the volume that's getting there isn't being exasperated by this house or this development, it's the same water that's coming around, it's just getting piped around, and then there's an energy dissipator to slow down and to avoid that water.
But can you, can you say that, can you say that in layman's terms? So are you saying, so they're saying the water's going to be piped somewhere and then go to it through a different place in their yard, which is gonna go to their house? Are you saying it's not going to go to a different place? Or are you saying it's going to go to a better place? Like, can you explain it in layman's terms, like?
The way, the way that I see the lot is that there's a swale that goes from the, let's say, the roadside, and it goes along the side of their house, and then it curves around the back of their property. The stormwater management facility that's built into the front yard is obviously gonna outlet into the start of that swale. The one that's being piped around the back, you have the house that's proposed in the way, and then you have the riprap apron going and turning and going towards that swale that's existing on their property.
So you're saying it's gonna go back to the same swale it had been going to?
Yeah, it's gonna, I mean, the swale goes along the side of their property, so it's going to ultimately get to that same exact point in the corner of their, like, around their, around their house. If it was, if it was, if all the water was coming in the front of the yard, it would still take that swale all the way back. If it was coming in the middle, it would still go around that swale in the corner. If it was coming from this angle, it would still go around their house. So it's, the water's still going around their house, based off the topography. So it's, the water is still going around their house, based off the topography.
I disagree with almost all of them's statements. It's now coming downhill in a different spot, whereas it used to follow that swale, use the hill to hit and lose energy and then turn. Where it's coming out now is riding my hill down to my house. Like, this is, I, I, you were on site, you saw this, I showed you a video of the, the water before, all three neighbors corroborated this, it is substantially-
It's also all being channelized now, which when you channelize water, it speeds up the rate that it comes out, and the energy distributor is supposed to slow that down, but we haven't seen any numbers showing, here's the, the flow rate before, and here's the flow rate it's gonna be after. So we have no reason to believe that-
But the direction of the water is also the new direction.
Yeah, the, the location of each ridge is different, and the flow rate, as far as we can tell, is gonna be much faster, and those two things combined become into the stream.
And the, the lot was on the plan?
No, the plan was approved, yeah.
So, it sounds like there's a disagreement on technical issues, and unfortunately, the board itself isn't qualified to answer these, so again, like, like, from before, we, we, I know, and the back and forth that's happening is, it can be productive, but I think that's better handled than a, like, if you wanna schedule another meeting with our township manager and our engineer, I think that would probably be, like, to, to further discuss, but.
That's the point of it, I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry, I'm, it's, yeah, 'cause, 'cause-
I can, can I just ask, so, Paul, I would like an, an email or some kind of update just as to what happened here, you know, where, where, maybe there's a disconnect, you know, maybe you're, you haven't seen the water come down the way they're seeing it, because, you know, maybe this means we should be adjusting our ordinances or doing something different, because this doesn't sound like the result we want.
Well, the challenge is, we have ordinances, if they're met, we have to give approvals. So it's, it's a rulebook that we've gotta live by.
The stormwater ordinance does say you can disapprove plans that they accept.
And you won't have to, I think, the problem here, and why we wanted to bring it to your attention, supervisors, and we already had meetings with Paul and Lori about the technical stuff, is that, yeah, maybe some of them ordinances should be evaluated, but just because an engineer stands something, doesn't make it correct. And in this case, I've watched this rain come down, if it's rained three days in a row, if the rain's hard on the second day, if it's windy, if it's been dry beforehand, I can tell you what it's all gonna do. And when I saw that pipe, I saw a potential problem. I don't think I'm wrong, I really hope I am, I, I just, I, I really do.
Let's set up the time to talk some more amongst us, and maybe revisit this.
And then, and then-
You know, that's foretalk, because I'm in the table at all.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Too many of us are talking at once. And then, again, maybe at a workshop meeting, we could look at, we could take a look at the, the tree ordinance. I, I am kind of surprised that, I understand if the trees are in the way of construction, there are varying, there's ways that people could, could remove the trees. I, I am somewhat surprised that there was no way to construct a house on the lot without clear cutting every tree on the, on the lot.
It's, it's partially why we make the, the replacement schedule so punishing at that top end, too, because, like, when they do take down specimen trees, they're putting up a whole bunch of replacement trees for those, 'cause like, and that's partially to deter, 'cause we can't completely deter development, but we can do that by making it very punishing to take down those very old, very big trees like that, so, so we can, we can take a look at it, and see if we can strengthen that.
I agree with Danielle.
I think it's at least worth a conversation at a workshop, even if we're not gonna take official action, just to have a conversation about it.
Again, we're sorry you're going through this.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just personally, I'm, I'm just outraged at hearing that eighty trees came off of a single property and-
No, 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 four, four trees were cut down, and they're gonna replace them with eighty trees. Because they were four large diameter trees, there's a chart we use, based on diameter, you multiply that by-
I was gonna ask, what is the fee to replace those?
It's whatever, it's whatever the cost of replacing a tree. I mean, like, to get, like, a three-inch, three-inch, or two-and-a-half-inch sampling, or, or not sampling, two-and-a-half-inch whip or something, it's, it's the cost of that times eighty.
Okay.
That, that could, that could run up to, that could run up to what, like?
We, we tried to go as far as we could to discourage removing especially specimen trees, to create an ordinance, we put a good bit of time into that a couple of years ago to come up with this, and it, we haven't had many cases where this has happened, which is good. We don't want people to just go through and clear cut and say, I don't want trees anymore, and create massive issues, you know?
Yeah, and, and the balances, the balances we have to, the balance we have to strike is that we can't, can't be affecting a, a taking of property, like, if that makes sense, that we can't just, we can't take, we can't take all property rights, but we can regulate some.
We caught a lot of flak for it.
And so we, we, yeah, so we, we had to, we did have to craft that fairly carefully, but there's always, there's always looking at it again, there's always looking at it to see if we can strengthen it further, and to-
I have a few places for trees across the street.
Oh, we might talk to you about that.
There are residents who have had to root trees in the township because of pests and, and damage, and I know PHS Tree Tenders was really successful, like, replanting in their community, so using those funds to aid, subsidize the tree management program.
That's an interesting idea, thank you.
That is an interesting idea, and perhaps would engender some more goodwill for those new neighbors in the neighborhood.
Yeah, they're fantastic people, they're a bunch of young town, I really, I think it's gonna be a great neighbor to have, if I just put my house on the water when you have a foot there, you gotta-
So long shot, but I have to ask, if we have forty or fifty trees that won't fit on that property, and we offered to put them on trees, on properties upstream where that rain's coming down, does that help dissipate if they were willing to accept them, or is that going too far out there?
I don't know if we're allowed to do that, it's, it's kinda weird.
We can't give gifts to certain-
Even if it's to help with a-
I, I get it, no, I, but, but I have, let me look into it, because there's a concern about, you know, who gets them, and, and how you evaluate where they go, and, and we've gotta be really careful about treating everybody the same, so, I can, I'll look into it, but I, I'm not sure it can be done.
I grant and ask you the very question. I, I can tell you that former members of our Environmental Advisory Council were members of tree tenders. I don't think we have any current members that are members of tree tenders, but it's something that we can talk to them about.
So we can, I mean, we can have another meeting, and I know, you mentioned the right-to-know, you, you guys can see the plans, we just can't copy them because of the copyright law. So that's the only reason that that piece of the right-to-know request was denied, we're not allowed to give them out.
Yeah, we, we appreciate that you forwarded the hydrology report, and I was expecting some flow rate catchment area on there, so if indeed they did make the problem worse, you would know that it was worse.